Good evening and welcome to our school committee meeting on the evening of Tuesday, November 23rd. We're coming out of an executive session and we're going to go ahead and start our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before I read the mission statement, we've got some special guests in the studio with us that I'd like to have Brendan Kent come up to the table with some very important athletes from our cross-country teams. Sammy Seaberry, it's not Seaberry, it is Seaberry, phew, and Mike Roberto. Brendan?
So, thank you. I know we normally have public comment first. Some of our athletes are actually playing in the student-faculty basketball game right now right next door, so we're trying to get them back on the court so they can whip those teachers around up and down the court. Students are winning right now, right? There we go. Awesome. So, I have Mike Roberto and Sammy Seaberry right next to me. Also MVP of the Middlesex League for Boys Cross Country and Girls Cross Country. I don't know if they even know that yet. Sammy doesn't. No, he does. Both Mike and Sammy both won the Middlesex League meet, the first time since 1994 that we had a boy-girl winner at the meet. Both our boys team and girls team won the Middlesex League championship. Girls won the Division II A state championship and boys last weekend won the Division II All-State Championship, first time since 1972. So, we also, yeah. They're very humble, very shy. We also have some of our other teammates, so I don't know if we want to pass the mic around and just introduce ourselves.
Eva Barnard.
Captain.
I'm a captain. I'm AJ Haradasi.
Another captain, Thomas Dowd.
Mike and Sammy. So, I don't know if you guys have any comments or anything you want to share?
Do you want to go?
All right, you can go.
Yeah, I couldn't be prouder of the team. We definitely came together this year. The, we kind of had a rough start to the season. We lost our first two duel meets, duel meets, and then after that, the team just came together and we all got really motivated. Yeah, I'm really happy with how things went. It couldn't have gone any better.
Yeah, same goes for me. Very proud of the team. There's a lot of ups and downs. We had a lot of goals for the season. Some of them weren't met, but we got through it and we ended up with a very big reward, which is very nice. And yeah, there was a lot of sickness and injury throughout the season and some of our athletes weren't feeling too good at some points and it was tough, but we made it through and pulled off a big accomplishment and got the job done.
Both Mike and Sammy are very humble. Mike just signed with Division One UMass Lowell and Sammy is currently being recruited by a number of Division One schools. So, two awesome kids, five awesome kids right here. So, I just want to say congratulations and awesome job.
I do want to say, I don't typically read the newspaper articles about sports, but now that my kids are in the high school, I'm actually paying a little bit more attention. And I'm sorry to admit that I haven't been looking at the girls' cross-country results, but I have been watching the boys because there's a number of boys on the team that I know. And it's been so fun to kind of watch kind of who comes in first and where you guys place. And there was a picture, I believe, of Michael Aria maybe like beating a couple of other people and I was just super excited for him. It's been, it's really been, I can't imagine that track is all that exciting, but I think maybe if I came and watched, I think so, because when you look at the, there were times, there was one race where you guys like came in like three in a row within like six or seven seconds. And I was thinking to myself, God, I wish I'd been there to see that because it looked like it was super exciting. So, I'm sorry Sammy that I don't know more on the girl side, but I have been paying attention to the boys stuff and it just has been really exciting and maybe I'll get myself out there to watch a meet at some point. But congratulations, you guys, and thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
And kudos to Karen and Perry. Obviously, you'd be the first, they've built impressive programs over the years, so congratulations to them too.
Now go kick some butt over at the gym.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks, guys. So, I'm going to get back to reading the mission statement because we do that every, every meeting. "The mission of the Wakefield Public Schools is to graduate students who are confident lifelong learners, who are respectful and caring members of their community. Our mission is to prepare students for college, career, and community by providing rich and challenging curriculum, high-quality instruction, and educational experiences that meet their individual needs and interests." So, it's time for public comment. We've got a couple people in, in studio, so we're going to start with them. And then if we have anybody on Zoom, I need you to kind of probably chat or somehow indicate that you'd like to speak. But we're going to start with Lisa Offry. Lisa, you can come up to the table. If you can just, oh, I meant to do a little bit of like, hey, we, for public comment, we typically ask that you keep it to three minutes. We're not going to hold you to that. Public comment for our public meetings is the time for the public to speak. Now is the time. Traditionally, what we ask is that there, that there is no other kind of public comment along the meeting as it goes. And that's really just to keep a meeting kind of moving. It's, this is a business meeting that happens in public. And so, the public comment really happens at the beginning. And so, Lisa, I'll go ahead and let you speak.
Oh, good evening. Hello, my name is Lisa Offry and I'm here tonight as a representative of a group of concerned parents and community members regarding the administration's failure and lack of communication in handling the recent issues at Wakefield Memorial High School. Because we have no confidence that the administration will respond to our questions, I am here tonight to formally request that the elected officials of this school committee place this matter on a future agenda for a public discussion in the immediate future. Parents and students deserve to know the safety plans in place to protect every student, what resources are available to students who feel unsafe, and what steps are being taken to prevent a similar situation from occurring in the future. Respectfully, it should not take three days of protest and the presence of news media for the school department to answer these questions. Unfortunately, however, even that has been met with silence. Therefore, we are here to request the school committee lead the charge in protecting our students. We look forward to seeing the disgust, this disgust at a public school committee meeting in the future. Respectfully submitted, the parents of the victims.
Thanks, Lisa.
Thank you.
Lisa, if you wouldn't mind sending that statement to us, it would be helpful to have that just kind of written down?
Yes, and I have everyone's signature on here as well.
That would be great.
We will do that.
And if you want to send it to me and I can send it to the rest of the committee, I'm more than happy to do that.
Okay, that would be great.
Okay, thank you, Lisa.
Thank you.
Next person on the list is Nancy Buckley.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Nancy Buckley and I'm here tonight to make a statement on behalf of the victims. Sorry. On October 11th, we discovered hundreds of inappropriate photos were unknowingly taken of us and posted to a public website. These photos consisted of close-ups of body parts and upskirts, which were then posted to the website with our individual names attached to the photos. The photos were then asked to be ranked and some also had price tags attached and available for purchase. Upon discovering these photos, we downloaded as many as we could and made the decision to present them to our parents and school officials, knowing this would be humiliating and cause us mental anguish. Despite this, we felt it was more important to protect our dignity and self-worth. Upon presenting the photos, the school officials offered us counseling in private areas within the school where we could go when we felt overwhelmed and needed to get away from it all, which is and was greatly appreciated. However, we were also told by school officials we needed to be more aware of our surroundings and we would like you to make amends with the students. Not only with the student, not only do we find these comments appalling and disrespectful, but it also showed us a lack of understanding by school officials of the depth of trauma and mental distress this has caused us. It also caused us a lack of confidence that school officials would protect us and keep us all safe. After repeated cries to the school officials of what would make us feel safe and comfortable, that one ignored. We were forced to bring our message to the community, which resulted in extensive media coverage. We are now crying out to you, the school committee, to hear our voices and put this on your agenda and to review all the policies and procedures that school officials follow during this process. We feel they are outdated and do not properly cover a heinous act of this magnitude. We are reaching out to you to keep us and all the students safe. No student should have to experience what we have endured over the past six weeks. Our goal is to ensure this never happens again. Respectfully, the 14 female victims. Thank you.
Thanks, Nancy. Next on our agenda is the Student Advisory Council. And we have, looks like we've got two. We've got Sophia and Isabella. Sorry, Isabella, I can barely read your, your name on there. So, let's, Sophia, are you ready to speak first? Oh, we do. I apologize. Sophia, please hold. Who do we want to have speak?
Hi, students.
Oh, hey, Aaron.
It's Erin Kreisos.
Yes.
Hi, I wasn't going to speak tonight because I really think the teachers are fully aware of the tense situation going on and we wanted our students to feel like they really had the floor. I just wanted to comment that I was really disappointed with them being second to, though the accomplishments of sports are remarkable and our students are fantastic, I do think maybe you should have kept with the structure, allowed them to have their voices heard first and perhaps maybe we could keep an eye on girls' sports just as much as boys. Thank you.
Fair comments. Thanks, Aaron. Anybody else? No. Okay. Sophia?
Okay. So, to start us off regarding academics, report cards were posted last week in I Pass.
Hey, Sophia, Sophia, hold on just for one second. Nancy and girls, in about a couple minutes, I am going to make a statement that I wouldn't mind having you here for. I think you could listen to it tomorrow, but I'd actually really like you here. No, 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 that's totally fair. Okay, Sophia, now I'm going to let you talk.
So, last week, we had virtual conferences and we got a lot of positive feedback from those. They were held over Zoom and parents could schedule times to meet with their students, teachers, and I believe those were held Thursday and Friday of last week. And then regarding extracurricular activities, Aiden Riley and Zach Baumhardt were elected by their peers to be the WMHS representatives at Student Government Day, which will be held on April 1st. And they will have the opportunity to engage with members of Massachusetts Executive, Judicial, and Legislative Branches. They will participate in the legislative process through simulated committee hearings, informal House and Senate sessions, and they will also meet and exchange views with peers from across the state on important issues. And then Bella can take it from here.
For other school news and happenings, tonight, the junior class is hosting a student-faculty basketball game in the Fieldhouse. It started at 7:00 and tickets are $5. Wednesday is an early release day. Students will get out at 10:50 and there's no lunch being served. Wednesday is also our outdoor pep rally for students. We are looking forward to having this event back. There will be performances by our band, the dance and cheer teams, and a tug-of-war contest between grades.
Great. Thanks for that update. Any questions for our liaisons? Okay, thanks, girls. If you need to drop, to do homework or what have you, thank you for, for joining us. We'd love to have you stay, but if you do need to drop, feel free to do that. Let's go ahead and do the consent agenda. I was going to maybe take things out of order, but this is really fast. And then, so, do we have a consent agenda?
We do. Move the school committee approve the minutes of the school committee meeting of October 27, 2021, and November 9, 2021, and to accept the minutes of the school committee Finance and Facilities Subcommittee meetings of October 28, 2021, and November 18, 2021, as presented.
Second. Motion made and seconded. All in favor? All opposed. Oh, I wonder if we need to do it because Amy is remote. Judy, you know what? Let's do, we need to do a roll call.
Okay. Ms. Vare?
Yes.
Mr. Markham?
Yes.
Mr. Voudre?
Yes.
Ms. Lehman?
Yes.
Mr. Ingles?
Yes.
Mr. Piscadlo?
Yes.
Ms. Wall?
Yes.
Thank you. So, the agenda, it's now my, my turn to speak. I do have, I'm going to take my mask off. I do have prepared remarks. They're not in response to what you guys had to just say. And they are remarks coming from me. There are a couple of times when I say "we" and in those cases, the school committee generally agrees, but most of this is me. It does not take into consideration the comments that you just made. I would like you to be very clear on that. We have more follow-up to do with you with that. "The school committee joins members of our community in expressing deep concerns about the troubling and inappropriate incident at the high school. The school administration has worked to address the incident, the incident in accordance with its existing policies. We understand the difficulty that many in our community have had, had with this process. We also understand that due process in any investigation takes care and time. Please know that this process and our policies are largely dictated by state law. As chair of the school committee, I can say with confidence that our administrators have acted in good faith to care for the students who were directly impacted by this individual's behavior while ensuring accountability for those unacceptable actions. The district has been transparent as the law allows and the superintendent has kept the school committee as up-to-date as possible. As the superintendent shared, the district has cooperated fully with the Wakefield Police Department to support its ongoing investigation into this matter. The high school administration has also identified ways in which we can engage with middle and high school students by offering them educational opportunities to ensure that they have a fuller understanding of how their actions on social media impact themselves and their peers. Above all, the community should know that the school committee and the administration are deeply committed, deeply committed to maintaining a learning environment where all students feel mentally and physically safe, welcomed, and supported. I'd like to close with this. I have met with administrators to understand the process we're following. I've reviewed our policies and the law that applies to this situation. I've met with some of the families affected. I trust that the administration team is doing the right thing in accordance with their responsibilities under the law. Everyone, everyone around this table is a mother, a father, or an uncle. What has happened is unacceptable and these behaviors cannot be tolerated. Supporting all students and making for it feel sure they feel safe is incredibly important to every one of us. I say that and also look all of you in the eye to say that we need to keep doing work. We've got more to do. And we heard you and we will respond. Unfortunately, it's hard to respond kind of in the moment, right? I also know that you probably don't love all of the things that I just said and I respect that. Thank you. That is it from my, my section. So, I think we're on, if you guys want to go, you can go. But I did want you to hear that.
So, can I ask one question?
You. Go ahead. Yep.
So, I appreciate your response. What I would like to know is, when do we get to respond to your response? And when do we find out what the school actually investigated? Because all the information was provided to the school and we have not been provided back any additional information.
I think those are fair questions. I don't know that I can answer them here.
Okay, that's fine. That's how I would like to leave it though, because.
Yep. So, Nancy, I want you to, can you repeat those for me? I know the second one, the kind of the results of the investigation.
The first one is, how and when can we rebut your statement that you just made, which I respect?
Yep.
And when will we find out what the school has done with their investigation? Because we provided all the facts, because these girls did their due diligence to come forward and show tremendous amount of strength and speak up. So, when are we going to find out what the school found out? Because we are owed that. They're owed that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Okay. So, we're on to superintendent's remarks.
Thank you, Susie. I'd also like to thank you for your, for your comments. And I do want the girls that were here this evening, our students, and, and parents that spoke this evening, to let them know that we are, we, we hear them and we are thinking a lot about their comments and, and their questions. And so, and there'll be more information that we'll be able to share, I think, in the coming weeks. So, again, Susie, thank you. And thank you to the, to the girls and the families. So, we're again thinking of them. Shifting gears, you know, we start every meeting talking a little bit about COVID. Our COVID numbers in the district this week, we have 20 positive cases in the district. It seems to be a little bit of an uptick. We have 17 students and three faculty members. And currently in quarantine, we have 87 in quarantine with 61 for COVID-like symptoms and only 22 directed by the Board of Health. Christine can provide a little bit of information on our test-and-stay program and also on our percentages for vaccination rates.
Sure. Good evening, everyone. So, we've been providing test-and-stay and symptomatic testing since the end of September. We've administered, the nurses have administered to date, to today, over 700 tests. Luckily, over that two-month period, we've only had seven positives in the schools. So, we feel it's very successful. We've kept all those students in school, whether it's from being symptomatic, from whatever symptoms they've presented, or test-and-stay from being a close contact potentially. So, we're feeling that that program is, is really working for us. It's been successful. We can't thank the nurses enough. That along, we have, we've continued to collect vaccination data from the nurses and for our staff. Currently, we are not at the high school at the 80% yet, but we are continuing to be vigilant and to collect that data every week.
Thank you so much, Christine. Next up, I'd like to ask Tim to come up to the, to the table and just give a quick update on our MSBA work and educational visioning.
So, over the past three months, we've begun our feasibility study process. SMMA as well as Left Field have brought in their contractors to begin conducting inspections and surveys of the existing conditions at the high school building. Specifically, I'd like to thank David Butler, who is our longtime custodian here in the building. He has really been able to provide a level of knowledge of this building to these people and really give a depth of information that otherwise we would not have had. So, I appreciate that from David. Concurrently, during that same time period, meetings have been organized between educational planners from SMMA, who's the design architecture firm that we're working with, as well as educational leaders from the high school. And they have been discussing current and future methods of education in order to create spatial, a spatial needs summary for the proposed new school. And using the information that from the design team, we'll produce multiple conceptual design options to be reviewed with the building committee. And a series of potential alternatives will include renovation projects, various renovation or addition options, and new construction options as well. The preliminary design program, or PDP, which is the first of three milestone submissions required under the MSBA's feasibility study program, will be submitted in early February. And this will include all the information gathered during this phase. After its approval, the building committee will recommend which conceptual design options should be further developed in the second of the milestones, which is the preferred schematic design. And I've had the opportunity to be in a, in a lot of these meetings and I just want to say that I've really enjoyed it. There's been a lot of participation from all corners of the school system. That's been an enjoyable process so far and it, it seems like there's a lot of good information coming from those meetings. So, that's what I have.
Thanks so much, Tim.
You got it?
We also want to let everybody know that in January, we will be inviting representation from Left Field, our project management group, and our designers to give an update as well as, as we start to summarize and the feasibility study really starts to take shape. And so, we'll have an update then in January. So, more to follow. But, Tim, thank you so much for your support of, of all of the designers and assessors coming in to evaluate systems.
Of course.
And look at spaces. And so, we're also meeting weekly with Left Field and SMMA. We have a meeting tomorrow morning to talk about spaces in the high school. So, more to follow there. So, thank you so much, Tim.
Thank you.
Next up, I'd like to introduce Jeff Weiner, who is our Director of Technology, whose job has changed quite a bit in the last 20 months. But what we had talked about some time ago, this was on the agenda, or we, we had put in the queue as just to have Jeff come in and, you know, he'll come in twice. And this is the first of those two times. And this time, he's going to talk about kind of the state of technology and kind of where we are in the district. His next time in will likely be in January or February, right around, right around budget time, to talk a little bit more about the, just the broader technology plan for the district. We, we had developed that plan pre-COVID and then COVID kind of knocked us sideways and we've had to kind of reinvent what technology is and what support is. And I can turn it over to Jeff just to talk a little bit about that.
Thank you. Thank you for, how you come in and talk today, tonight. I will, I have a quick slideshow and then if anybody has any questions, I'm happy to answer those. If we can go to the first slide, that'd be great. That would be insane over here. Thank you. So, really what the technology department has been kind of focusing on, we tried to kind of break it down into, into areas of focus. We have student experience that we looked at, I teach. We have student experience that we looked at, teacher experience, community engagement, and a management and operations is really the areas. And then obviously, we have technology support, just overreaching all of that. So we're just people that need help and, you know, I'm kind of on the go. So I'm going to break into those different areas, one at a time, just to kind of highlight some areas we've been able to kind of improve things and change. And again, as Doug said, we've definitely evolved and changed over the last couple of years. So if you go to the next slide, that'd be great. I'll start with student experience. We now, in the district, have one-to-one Chromebooks K through eight in all the classrooms. I think before COVID, we had some in grade two, sprinkled in grades K and one, but now it's one-to-one K through eight across the board. So, we still have BYOD at the high school, but we're providing devices that need them. No matter what the reason is, they need them, they get them. We, when remote learning started last year, we implemented a new web portal that provided simplified or single sign-on for most of our applications, which has been great. I think it's a lot easier for students and teachers to be able to access all of their resources in one place, instead of having to go to, you know, 22 different websites to find what they need to learn. I think that's been great for students. No student device is currently more than three years old, thanks to COVID relief money we were given, which was, you know, really helpful last year, especially where students had devices at home and they had devices in school. And it was kind of challenging to track those. So we were able to do that. So our devices are fairly new. Right before COVID, we were able to put security cameras in all the schools to help keep the school community safe, which I think has worked out pretty well. And the technology department right now is kind of building, along with the library media specialists at the high school, to kind of build a student help desk at the high school, where students will come in, if they have some time, they can learn technology skills, they can help other students, they can, you know. It's just a good program to kind of build more community for students and teachers together. So we're excited about that. That's ongoing right now, we're just starting to do that. Next slide, please. So teacher experience. We, teachers now have reliable sets of student devices. It's part of the, you know, the one-to-one K through eight. But the teachers also now have reliable devices in their classrooms they can count on. You know, previously, we may have had a device that was, you know, more like four years old or more. And now, again, they should be no more than three years old, and so those devices are a lot more reliable. When COVID hit, we had remote instruction. We were able to get a large number of high-quality cameras for teachers to use, so they weren't just using the cameras on their computers. And these cameras offered better sound, better picture quality, so they could actually show more things that they were trying to present. We also got document cameras similar to that for digital presentation of real-world items. If somebody was doing like a science class, wanted to do an experiment, they could just use a document camera for that. If they had a rock, you can actually show it. And in front of a camera, it's kind of hard to just hold up a rock in front of a camera. So the document camera's really allowed for more flexibility in teaching. Again, the clever portal, I mentioned it before, while it's great for students, and kind of one-stop, get all your stuff, teachers can actually customize the services that their class uses by teacher or class. So if a student only needs a certain number of tools, the teacher can customize a teacher page, and they can actually provide that to students. So I think that's been great for teachers, too. And then, again, teacher devices. We're in the middle of distributing some teacher devices now, but when that's finished, those device, teacher devices, will be only older than three years, as well as student devices. So, we find as Microsoft, as the companies change their software, it definitely affects the speed and the functionality of computers that we provided. So the more we can provide newer computers, the faster they are, and the better it is for everybody. So, next slide, please. Community engagement. We definitely, COVID, again, changed a lot for us. We started to provide technical support for pretty much every family at home, which was a bit of a challenge with four staff members in the technology department. But I think we were able to do it. I think people, you know, I think people really got the help they needed when they needed it. You know, it may have taken a little bit longer than a normal time, but I think we were successful in that. We were able to provide internet access for families that had no internet at home previously. And in some cases, we're still providing that for some. We really, even in the last five years, I would say, have built really strong partnerships with Town IT. So that's been great for everybody. I think it's, you know, that sense of community in Wakefield, not just schools, towns. It's, you know, it's, I think we all work together very well. So I appreciate that partnership with Town IT. I know it a lot. District Educational Technology, we've invested in software, like online services, which really made some, a lot of our technology and services available at home for people that previously maybe they had to come to school to access. So that, you know, that gives students flexibility of where they can learn. So that's been, that's been really great, too. And right now, we're really working hard on developing our website and throwing more accurate information out there, getting more resources on the website so people can find it whenever they need to at any time, without having to contact the school to get it. So we're reviewing that, starting last week, this week, and really trying to make some positive changes there, too. Next slide, please. For our management operations, we were able, again, last year, we, you know, as hard as it was of a year, we were able to make some positive changes in the district with technology. We were able to increase the bandwidth at all the schools. We tripled the bandwidth at the high school and doubled it at all locations. And the reason we didn't triple it at all locations is because the high school was, on its own internet connection was slower than all the others together, because it didn't need as much. But we were able to bring them all up to the same exact place. So it really has tripled at the high school now and doubled everywhere else. And it's been, we haven't had any, you know, I'm going with, we haven't had any issues with internet bandwidth availability. Capital, Wakefield Capital Committee funded new Wi-Fi in FY21, so that's up and running district-wide. It's definitely been a better experience. I've heard a lot less problems with internet speed and things like that, and access to Wi-Fi. The town also, for this year, supported a projector replacement plan to ensure reliable classroom projectors available. And that's going to happen, hopefully, in December. All the hardware was backordered, so we had some issues with that. But once we replace, and that'll be at the Galvin Middle School. And once those projectors are replaced, we keep all the projectors that are in good condition still, and we use them for hot swaps in other schools to minimize downtime if there's a bad projector somewhere else. We also started monitoring projector lifespan, like monitor projector uptime. So we know if a projector's left on in the school. I know I've driven by a couple of times, and there's a blue light in the window. Now we know, we get timers set on them, so they shut off at certain times automatically to save the life of those projectors, too. And we can manually shut them off if we know that one is still on and it shouldn't be. And again, the security cameras are there to, you know, for student safety, staff safety. So I think that's been a positive change as well. Next slide, please. So just a quick number snapshot. Between September 1st and October 31st, which is kind of around the time I created this, we had 821 tech tickets close in that short period of time. So that was a lot. We have four staff members in the tech department, 3,500 student devices right now, about 340 staff devices, 290 projectors, 42 copiers, 378 access points, just numbers. We're working, we're dealing with the security systems, the cafeteria systems, the HVAC systems are all connected to technology, building access, card access systems, you know, Wi-Fi and internet, and the, obviously, the student information system. So there's a lot going on, a lot going on. But we're, I'm lucky to have a good team to work with. And we'll keep going, we'll just keep pushing forward and try to make things better. Next slide, please. I won't read through all these. These are just some of the services that we were able to get online for, you know, for teaching and learning remotely and in school. So there's a lot of stuff here. Again, I don't want to read through every single one here, but just a kind of a snapshot of what we have available. Next slide. And this is kind of the people that work with technology, right? So I already talked about the technology department. We also have building-based support, people in, like a building-based support person in every school. That kind of helps with technology, it's usually a teacher in the school. We have library media specialists that do great work with us all the time. At some point, a few years ago, probably three or four years ago now, the technology department partnered with the library media specialists, and that's been a great relationship for all of us, I think. We have curriculum coordinators that really work with us. They're kind of the experts in the software that they work with. And so we really work hand-in-hand with those folks, too. And then, again, I mentioned earlier, the student technology support that we're kind of working towards at the high school with the help desk. And, you know, even those students will be able to branch out a little bit and help at other schools at different times when they have, when they have free time, if it's convenient, if it's closed. You know, we want to make sure we manage that well. So I think that's it for the presentation.
Thank you, Jeff. I think there's a few questions here. Michael?
So Jeff, this may be a question for you or both. In regards to the new high school, is the expectation that each of those classrooms in the new high school will be completely wired with projectors, screens built in? Is that the game plan at this stage?
I would say, yeah, from my perspective, I would say yes. Just like the Galvin was, we would have all the technology in every classroom that we would need. Definitely, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. Amy?
You had mentioned that the devices, none of them were older than three years. The ones that you're replacing, what does the district do with those?
So we keep them, we always keep, we never get rid of any old devices when we replace them. I mean, we, at some point, you can't keep them in circulation because the software's just not supported on an older device. But we always keep the devices that we replace as spares in case a device breaks, in case, you know, hopefully not, but someone drops one or something. We, you know, we always keep them handy. We, some, sometimes they go to paraprofessionals, sometimes they go to students to use. I mean, we always, we never get rid of a device unless it's completely broken. The worst case, we might put two together if they're really like half-broken, half-broken. We might take them apart, make one good device out of them. So we definitely, yeah, we don't waste anything, and same with projectors. It's like, we'll keep them until they don't work anymore. But devices are a little harder, especially Chromebooks, because they, Google at some point stopped supporting older device hardware, and they won't update the devices anymore. Then they can't be used for things like Comcast, they can't be used for some of the Google apps that we use. So, I mean, we do have to watch that and not let them keep cycling back into the school.
Is there any type of buyback program that either Google does or something in the community to bring money back into the district?
We haven't found anything that's really well-managed, if I can say it that way. Even recycling, like we've, we've tried, by the time we get to a buyback, our devices are kind of done. Really not, there's really nothing to buy back, to be honest. And we've even tried recycling programs with, outside of the town, and those didn't go well at all. I think one of our vendors, you know, we found out our vendors weren't destroying the devices. They were taking them and cleaning them and maybe selling some of them. And so we got those back. But, so we're even hesitant to use a recycling program like that. So I think, I think Tim and I have talked about trying to look into the, kind of work with the town recycling and see if we can do something with that. But, yeah, by the time, honestly, by the time we get to a buyback, those devices aren't even worth anything. That's how much we use them.
Thank you.
And reuse.
Other questions? Tom?
Thank you. Okay. So, hey, so Jeff, thank you very much for the presentation and for the, for really what has been, you know, a year and a half of really behind-the-scenes work. We haven't, you know, really had a chance to chat with you very much and see you, but certainly, you know, we recognize you and your team's behind-the-scenes work and really making a lot of things happen in the last year and a half. So certainly, thanks very much for that, as well as for tonight's, you know, update. One question I have, sort of looking forward, if it's fair to ask, because we're all about, you know, a couple of weeks away from beginning the budget planning process and such. What on your side of the aisle are some of the future needs that you're looking at for the district?
I mean, right now, we're actually in really good shape, thankfully. You know, we always look at age of devices. We always, we just got new Wi-Fi, we're getting the new projectors at the Galvin. You know, projectors are always an issue. I always look forward to projectors because you can't wait till they break into school. It's not like other places where you can just wait for them to fail and replace them all. You have to plan to replace them all at a similar time. And even then, like, you know, we talked with Town Capital last year, and, you know, they gave us what we needed for that replacement. And we don't have any technology capital requests even for this year, because we, with the COVID money we got and the capital purchase, we got of projectors, the new Wi-Fi, I mean, we're actually in really good shape right now. So I do just keep an eye on, you know, do people need, what do people need to support the curriculum more than what I think they need in a classroom? So it's, you know, it's different software that people need, maybe, instead of hardware this upcoming year. We always look at device replacements, but we're not going to need to do that either. We always need Chromebooks, that's a yearly cost, just to make sure we keep a cycle going. And we don't get behind, because if we get behind, then we don't have the budget that year to, that next year to cover what we need. So I think that's really, in my head, it's always that, don't get behind. See what new, you know, what new curriculum is out there that requires technology use. I hate to get the technology, then say, use this to do something. I always want to hear like what teachers are doing first, and then say, what can we, where can technology help you? So I think that's, I don't know if that answered your question, but-
No, that's a terrific answer. So thank you, Jeff. Yep, that's great, thank you.
Sure.
Amy, I think you had a question, I couldn't see you with the way the screen is laid out.
Oh, yeah, sorry. I just, I wanted to go talk a little bit about safety. If you could explain, like, where the security cameras are, are they recorded? Is someone monitoring them? Are they inside the school, outside the school? And then internet safety, is it different in every school? I know, like, they can't email outside the school, but if, once they're on the internet, can they get outside, are there firewalls, or is there any restrictions?
Sure. So cameras first. There are cameras in all the schools and outside all the schools. I don't, I don't think somebody's sitting there, I know they're not, sitting there staring at them all day. I think usually, how they're used is when something happens in the school, you can go back. They are recorded to a certain amount of time. And they are continuously recording, so I think they keep probably a couple of weeks' worth of footage. So if something happens, you can go back and find that date, time, go back and review whatever you need to, and kind of see what happened. I think that's generally how they're used. Outside, they're used the same way. There have been incidents outside of a school, you know, whether it's vandalism or whatever it is. And you can go back and you can always usually catch an angle. So we try to angle everything where you don't miss anything. Obviously, there's a, you know, there's missing spots here and there, but, but that's, I think that's pretty much how the cameras are used. And as far as internet, yes, we do have, so all the schools have internet access. They, there is a firewall with filtering, content filtering, that controls it. Content filtering is interesting because it works in categories. This is how the firewalls are set up. And so there's, you know, a gambling category, a shopping category. So you can kind of block by category. And then if there's specific sites that you find, I mean, obviously, they don't catch all. So if there's specific sites that you find, then you can go back and block by site. And the opposite is also true, you can allow by site. So sometimes sites are blocked and they shouldn't be. They just, you know, they get caught under one of those filters. And so that's kind of how we control that. And definitely, like, I feel like, you know, I talk to a lot of teachers about that, too. And they, you know, they monitor what their kids are doing, too. And if they find something that should or shouldn't be there, they always let me know, like, right away. So, you know, I appreciate that support, too, because obviously, we all want our kids to be safe. You know, my own kids are in the district as well, so I see, I see what they can get into and what they can't. And that's helpful, too. So I think, I don't know if that completely covered it?
No, that was helpful, thank you, yeah, I appreciate it. And I have to say, I'm pretty impressed with the amount of work you get done with just four staff members.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Steven?
Yeah, hi, Tim, Steve. So I also want to commend you on sort of an 18 months of just, you know, you throw the numbers up, and it just doesn't really encapsulate, you know, all of the questions that you absolutely were peppered with from students and teachers. And it was a lot. So I'm sure there were some speed bumps, but you guys handled it like pros, it was amazing. I also want to commend you on the, on bringing the students back into the help desk at the high school. That's sort of just kind of on-brand for what I think we're trying to do as a district, give them sort of paths, you know, outside of, you know, a roadmap outside of high school. And you're kind of already getting it done organically within the school, that's fantastic. I guess maybe this might be a question for Doug, or is there teacher professional development around tech? In terms of-
So we haven't had teacher PD around tech in a couple of years.
Okay.
Well, mine, last year, we had a lot.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, at the beginning. But can you elaborate a little bit more, Steven, what you mean?
Everything from, you know, as it related to remote schooling, or, you know, as different things come online, like when Jeff mentions clever, that was a complete platform change in a year.
Yeah.
So were we supportive in our, you know, what we were putting out there for professional- Um, so were we supportive in our, you know, what we were putting out there for professional development? Because we want teachers to succeed.
Yeah.
And are we giving them those tools?
Yeah, I, I was thinking, I'm sorry, I was thinking about like the old fashioned, like, let's get, you know. Let's get social media into, or let's get other in, things into teaching and learning, like the old school PD is what I was thinking about.
Okay.
The new ways that we folded in.
Yeah.
I think it's au- like it's automatic.
Okay.
Like when we roll out a new curriculum, you know, new curriculum always has a significant technology support, right? And, and not only does it have it, teachers expect it. Like they, you know, if there's not a significant technology support for the curriculum, you know, teachers are like, it's kind of like a hard stop.
Are we talking about learning modules? Or are we talking about active support from technical persons from?
It can be both.
Okay.
It can be both.
So the clever example, I mean, that was something that, um, I know Valerie Drynan, um, took a lead on with some of the other curriculum coordinators too, just. That was in response to all of the, um, you know, the different logins and, and, you know, things that we had going on from COVID, but it's something that we've continued with because it's just so efficient.
Oh, it's awesome.
For the kids. And so, you know, I think Jeff, correct me if I'm wrong, but I, I believe they brought it to you, you looked into it, and then it was a whole, um, you know. Investigation of what it would take to ha- happen. And then there was a combination of hands-on support in the classroom as needed, but, you know, or, or some teachers were more self-directed. Is that accurate, Jeff?
Yeah, no, that's exactly, it's spot on. So, uh, and I find a lot of times too with, with like tech, new tech resources, I think, uh, I think Carrie, you said it. The curriculum coordinators did a great job in their content areas of helping us kind of push that out. And then I also see that, um, there are, you know, obviously there's, there's teachers that are savvy and there's teachers that are less savvy. So I think the savvy people learn it and then they work with their teams and they work with their departments and, uh, and then everybody kind of slowly learns it organically. And then we go in when people need help, obviously, and, and we can sit with individuals at that point because you don't have to sit with a group of thirty people. Um, and we go and sit with individuals and kind of walk them through it, and they've already seen it, they've already worked with it. So by the time we get there. Um, I feel like they have a good handle on it already. They just aren't comfortable with it. And then, so we can easily sit with them and work with them. Yeah.
Thank you. That's great. And, um, sorry.
No, please, go ahead. Yeah, I'm sorry.
And when we talk about tech support for families, is, do you think that we're equally, um, doing that on software platforms and with hardware?
Yeah, I mean, we did, uh, it was, it was anything they had trouble, I mean, it was clever. It was, um, you know, the individual, so we, we obviously deal with the, the higher level stuff. And then if it was clever and then somebody was having trouble with, you know, uh, a math program, then it would go to the curriculum coordinator next. Uh, and maybe then down to the individual teacher. So, uh, those, those folks a hundred percent supported us during this. It wasn't just like the tech department trying to figure it all out. Uh, but it was also like hardware problem at home too. It was, somebody had trouble with their home internet and you got to kind of try to figure out if it's their home, if it's a device that we let them take home. Or if it's their home internet, they just maybe didn't know the password, you know, to their wifi. So there were a lot of challenges in that, but it was definitely, we definitely filtered it. Uh, to get the, the fastest answer possible and to get the, the best answer. Because again, I don't know everything about every software package, but, you know, that, that, that curriculum coordinator, that teacher that works with it every day. Um, when it got to them and it didn't take long to get to that, which was great, uh, we always felt good about that. Um, they were right there to answer those questions. And, and if they didn't know we worked together, we figured it out. And everybody was so good to work with. I, I really, honestly, I'd say, I mean, it's everyone that I appreciated all the, the kind of collaboration that, that happened. Because without that, I don't know that we would have been as successful, so.
That's great. Sorry, two, two more things. I'm sorry. There, when, uh, so in terms of like the security cameras and if things happen. Um, if, are they reviewed in terms of, um, if something did happen to them? Um, and then we want to look at something a couple of weeks later and they were out of commission for X reason. Is there like any sort of timetable that you check to make sure that they're doing what they should be doing? Or how would you know if there was sort of an outage?
I mean, we try to check them frequently as we can. Um, you know, they, because someone's not staring at them twenty-four hours a day, obviously. Um, we do have to go in and check and review and make sure they're running and make sure they're not, you know, I, we, I know we have some, there were some at one point that were, uh, like the outdoor ones mostly. Uh, we find that they're off sometimes. Uh, I don't know if it's a weather thing or if it's just a, you know, they're, I mean, they're outdoor cameras, but, um, sometimes they're a weather thing. Sometimes they might be tampered with. We don't, I don't think they have been, but. It could be, you know, and, uh, and then we do work with the town on that. So, um, town IT is, is super responsive to any time we find one that's not working. Uh, they check it out. They, you know, they, they add new cameras for us whenever we need one anywhere. Um, and so that's really something that they support us with, um, a hundred percent. Like they're, they're great with that. Uh, and it's, it's a quick phone call. It's not a, there's no, no week two that goes on between. It's, you know, we call the town, they take a look at it because they know the security camera is important, so.
That's great.
It's definitely a priority. They put a priority on that.
Um, and my last question surrounds like student passwords. Um, and the only reason I have this question is because I have two, um, elementary school kids. And, uh, when they first get there, their school email, it's, um, it's not that secure. Um, and then something happened where, uh, one of my kids, their password just changed. Um, and I wasn't sure if that was something that, that, like, it got changed and I got an email that it changed. And I'm just curious what triggered that, if it was something sort of?
We, um, so, oh, go ahead, sorry.
No, no, go ahead.
Uh, what we try to do, like, obviously the younger grades, they have trouble typing passwords in the first place, so, um. But we do want them to have their own account to work with. Uh, uh, and so I think, I don't want to broadcast the passwords, so.
Nope.
Uh, you know, they're, they're obviously easier, probably easier passwords, uh, for the first few grades. And then at certain grade, uh, they change to something that's, that's unique because we feel like we've seen, not just feel like, but we've seen. That maybe at that grade level, that's when kids might log into their friend's account and maybe play around a little bit and do something. Uh, that's really what our, where our line is, is where we've seen it as a problem before. Um, and obviously if the problem goes back a grade, then we're going to do that back grade too. It's just from feedback from teachers is when younger kids are trying to type these complicated passwords. They just lose class time and we don't want that. That's obviously, uh, something you don't want. So, and, and letting kids use guests doesn't let them save their work as easy, doesn't let them do a lot of things. So, uh, we took guest off and we, we have an easier password for that reason. Um, and then the change in password from one grade, from that certain grade to the next one, um, it definitely is a trigger for us to change all those passwords to something unique. Um, so I don't know if that's what you saw. Uh, we also do reset the passwords at the beginning of the year because students change them sometimes, or parents change them sometimes. Um, to something they can remember easier. Um, and then we want to make sure teachers have access too. And so all teachers obviously have a, a sheet of all the kids' passwords too. So as soon as a student changes a password, the teacher can't help them anymore. So, um, so there's a lot of reasons why we would change and not change. And why we have an easier password here and a harder password over here.
That is great. Thank you. That was exactly what I wanted to know. Thank you.
No problem.
I'm done.
So, so Jeff, I had a question, and I only have one question. So, uh, obviously last year and a half, coming up on two years, quite honestly, at this stage, you know, it's been a long, hard road and kudos to you. I don't know how you held it together, honestly. But, you know, all along the way, I kept saying, okay, what are the silver linings that we, we, we learned from going through COVID? And, you know, if you forget about the additional funding for a second, you know, because money is one thing. But, you know, have you looked at things through a different prism and thought, we need to change our technology in this way? I'm just sort of curious from you, because you know it better than any, what was probably one of the bigger benefits that you've been able to achieve through COVID?
I think as a district, like with technology, I think people learn how to be more flexible, honestly. Uh, it wasn't so, I need this to work this way, I need this to work that way. Uh, and, and, and it kind of teachers did that without me, but, um, I think, uh, we just helped support them and, and it was, it was more of a flexibility thing, I think. Where people found new ways to do things, uh, whatever that was that worked for them. Um, and I, I think we always say, you know, have low-tech options, have high-tech options. And I think people found those that really worked, but they all still managed to deliver the content they needed to. You know, some people used a document camera, some people used a regular camera, some people, people found ways to do different things. And I think that, where, where, before that, it would be like, I'm in my room, I have a computer, it's connected to a projector, it works. You know, we found a way to, to broadcast, you know, chickens hatching with a webcam and on the internet, you know, we found. So there were things that people did because kids couldn't be in the classroom staring at it. Um, and I think that, to me, that's what I saw the most change was, was flexibility in, in, in the way people were using technology or, or not. Just made it harder, but, um. Yeah, I think that's, for me, that's what I, I, if I had to call something out.
Yeah, that's a great answer. Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you so much, Jeff. I, we appreciate you being here. And, uh, to your staff, Tom Egling, Donna Cushman, Julie Cushman, thank you very much. Much, much appreciated.
Thank you. We appreciate, uh, we appreciate the support we get too. So, um, you know, we couldn't do, we couldn't do our work without it. So, thank you.
So.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Thank you, everyone.
So I, I, I will share in, in regard to technology, one of the things that is, is unique about, um, Jeff as a director. Is he's genuinely curious and likes to solve problems. He's like a puzzle guy, right? And so he's been involved, um, with, you know, we've had problems with HVAC systems. He gets involved. Uh, we've had problems with, you know, um. Telephones gets involved, like tel-, you know, and a, a lot of directors of technology, they have an expertise and that's their, that's their path. You know, with, with Jeff, the more difficult the challenge, the engineering challenge, the problem solving challenge, the more he kind of digs in. And really works to figure it out. And I think, you know, he's been involved in any number of systems. Um, you know, again, facilities control systems, temperature control systems, lighting systems. Uh, you know, he, he has his hand in everything, which is, I think, makes him, you know, that much more valuable to the district and, and. Um, that much more efficient and effective in his role. So, thank you, Jeff. We appreciate it.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Very, very kind.
Yeah. I'm talking about this. I see him smiling like he knows he's, he loves, he loves this stuff.
And who wouldn't?
So funny. Um, so with like, just kind of moving on to the next agenda item, just an update on kind of the, the logo, um, and the work that we, we are planning. And so we are going to be using, um, our new policy that was, that was passed by school committee, um, to guide the work, which we, which we appreciate. It's a little bit cleaner than the resolution to work from. Um, and, and we will be putting together student forums and community forums in, in the coming month. And so there'll be more information to follow there. That model that we're going to use is going to be, um. Almost the same as the curriculum work that, that Care is doing, and it's just a, a kind of a couple of months ahead of us. You know, the, the change in, and the, and the going from a resolution to a policy took some time and, and just to kind of get this back onto, to a front burner. Is, is a real priority for us in, starting in December. And so again, there'll be a student forum and a community forum, and we'll also be putting a group together. And I don't know if you want to give an update, Karen, just on the curriculum?
Yeah, I can speak a little bit to that. So one of the other, um, directives that came from the, the resolution was around assembling a task force and it, around indigenous people's history. And, and how it's reflected in our curriculum. Um, so I've been working really closely with our curriculum coordinators, Jason Pavy, our, our social studies five-to-twelve coordinator. Margaret Messier, our five-to-twelve ELA, and Lisa Azerito, our humanities curriculum coordinator at elementary, to head up the group. Um, we had our first meeting last night, and I can just speak a little bit, um, you know, like Doug said, that the process involved reaching out, um, to, to, um. See who'd be interested in being part of the, the task force. We have a great, um, well-represented group. Um, we have myself and four other administrators, our curriculum coordinators I mentioned, we have five teacher reps. Um, we have five community members and four Wakefield High students, um, as part of the group. So it's a really nice group. We had our first meeting last night. Um, which was a kickoff. Um, we had a keynote speaker, Dr. Michi LaSar came and spoke to us, um, just about the importance of this work and, and teaching the truth and reflecting, um, history in our curriculum. And then we also talked about our plans for the future, which will include, um, uh, breaking off into subgroups, subcommittees. Um, one subcommittee that will be focused on research and Wakefield history. And then the other will be focusing on researching, uh, presenters with regard, um, presenters, um, around indigenous history. Who could possibly, um, work with our students in other grade levels that we didn't highlight as, um, kind of natural, natural entry points for this work. Which Jason and Margaret talked a little bit in the spring about what's already happening, um, in terms of content at different grade levels. Um, and then what we're picturing is those two subcommittees even breaking into four. Cause we've talked a lot, um, I think as a committee, we've talked about this and, a- as a group too, um, just the need for, um, to think about developmental, um, levels. And, and presenting information in a developmentally appropriate way. So we're thinking probably about breaking out elementary and secondary for each of those topics. Um, so that's just kind of an overview. We have, we've, we mapped out four, uh, I think we have three more large group meetings and then the subcommittee work will happen. Um, with them, but, but last night was a good night. It was our first meeting. It's a good group. We're excited about it.
Thank you, Karen. Any questions in formal? Amy?
Yep. Um, all right, so the policy, so going back to logo stuff, the policy now kind of supersedes the resolution?
Correct.
Okay, so the date that was on the resolution of December thirty-first is no longer in effect?
No.
Okay. Um, with the forums that are going to be happening, what's kind of the, and maybe it's too early to, to tell. But what's kind of the overview of what's going to happen at the forum?
Um, I think just to talk about the process and get feedback.
Okay.
You know?
Oh, go ahead.
I think we need to kind of go over, my sense is that there, we're going to need to revisit, um, kind of what we're looking for in a new logo, right? And so I, I don't think, so what's going to be difficult for SAM is to kind of, um, you know. Just to get feedback around what, what can we look at?
Yeah.
Right? Cause that's a difficult thing, right? What, what can we now consider as our, our new logo, right? And so I'm sure that we'll have to talk that through, talk through, you know, what might be a match, because we, we are looking at keeping the warrior name, right? So if we're keeping the warrior name, what, what might align to that? How white, how might we be able to, uh, create, get a symbol or a, a logo or something to align with that? So I think it's just really trying to outline what we're going for and then to hear from, um, from different stakeholders, right? One of the things that the resolution says is that, you know, that the majority group or stakeholder group in that process are students, right? It's not that we won't have opportunities for others to participate, we will. Uh, but we really need to hear from students in terms of what they might think about this. But it's a facilitated process.
And will the committee that you're putting to, is that what we're calling it, a committee?
Yes.
All right. Will that have been chosen prior to the forums or after forums?
It will, it will likely be chosen after.
Okay.
So I think the forums, we, we have to talk about this. I was gonna, we, we have to talk about this a little bit. Because there's, there's really two ways to do it. One is to create the committee and have the committee attend the forum and take the information from the forum. The other is to hold the forum and then create a committee and summarize what came from what you got for feedback, right? And so we, we have to talk a little bit about that, but.
Okay.
So, um, we'll, we'll, we'll nail that down.
Okay. And do we have dates set yet for?
We do not.
Okay. When can we anticipate that?
Um, the dates for December?
The dates for the first forums? Yeah, if it's, if, the student one's going to be separate from community ones?
It will be.
Okay.
It will be. It definitely will be.
Okay.
And so, um, the student one will go first.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, the community forum will go second. And so we don't, we don't have dates yet. As soon as we do, we'll let you know.
Okay. And, um, how will it be communicated to the public?
Um, it'll, it'll come out with an email, a messenger email.
Okay.
Yeah.
And people can sign up for that through the town's website or?
So for the forum, it, the, so in regards to the, for the committee, so we'll, we'll get a timeline out, right? Like forum one, forum two, how to participate, when to come, and then we'll get more information on if you're interested in being part of a, of the committee. This is who you reach out to, this is the process, this is the timeline.
We've matched up kind of, like Doug said, we're, we're going to align it pretty similar, but the outreach for, um, fighting members of the committee. Went out by school email for anybody internally, messenger to parents. I think we had like a, a town message for community. We put it in the item, so similar efforts to hit, hit all groups.
All the.
Yeah, no, no, how you get your news.
Do you have, uh, in your minds a limit of how many are going to be on these committees? I mean, you could have hundreds of people potentially.
Well, when, I, you know, I don't, well, I think that, that up the hundreds, when, if they're coming in the hundreds, that's like a forum work. You know, likely the committee will, I don't know exactly how large it's going to be, but it's not going to be, if it's too large, you're not, it's going to be difficult to get any work done, right? And so, and if the majority of our stakeholders are going to be students in that group, you know, we need to do it around their schedules as well. So, um, but it's going to be a group that, that's large enough so that voices can be represented and heard. Uh, but small enough so that we can make decisions and get some work done. Um, because we'd like to get some information back in front of the committee so that the school committee can make, um, a final decision. so that the school committee can make a final decision based on the recommendations that are made from the, from the, the committee.
And then, as far as a new design goes, and again, it might be too early to talk about this yet, but the people that are on the committee, will those be the ones that are designing the, the logo? Or will it be something that those people will discuss how they want? Do we want to have a contest? Do we want to have, you know, hire somebody? What, how are we going to determine who is the ones that are actually creating the design?
So, that's a great question. I think one of the things that we, we need to get nailed down in the forums is, you know, what people might be thinking about for quote unquote a design, right? And so, I think we can do it, I think we can do a lot of it with our students, right? And I think we can also do a lot of it through our art department. Our art department brilliantly has created a number of things. You know, the logo that you see on our letterhead, where you see Inspire Love Learning, where, where it's a W.
It's right behind you.
But, from, from the top. There you go. That was created by Morgan Ginotti, right? And so, you know, we have a tremendous amount of expertise in-house. So, likely it would, it would be done, I think our first choice would be to have it done with teachers and students in-house. Yeah. So, let's go around. So, more, more to follow. But, that's it. Brendan, right on time.
For one.
Wait, hold on, I have a question.
Hold on, sorry.
Sorry. Sorry. What are we using in the interim?
We're using the, the same W that we've been using?
Okay. I'm not familiar with that, I don't have any kids at place sports, so.
It's the Ohio State University.
One of the track and field kids had like the W with the Warriors across the bottom. I would say that would be, that would be interim.
The ones, the ones that you saw at the T-stop game.
Okay. And, and when we were just talking about who, who's just going to make the logo, I thought the policy read it was the, the committee and not really primarily the art department, but we can look at that later and talk offline.
Yeah, I think, I, I don't want to miscommunicate in terms of, I, I took Amy's, Amy Wall's question to be in terms of developing options or developing symbols, who might do that? Would kids do it? Would there be a, a contest or who would do it? And I think my, my response to her was if kids developed an idea or a concept, or committees developed an idea or a concept, that the art department might be able to kind of make that take shape.
Okay.
Okay? Other questions? Great, thank you. Next, I'd like to ask Brendan to come up and just give a, a kind of a summary of, of our fall sports.
It's good to be back again. The students crushed them, it was, yeah. It got a little out of hand second half. The teachers kept it close to the first quarter, I'll give them credit, and then the students ran away with it. They almost put up 100 points on them. We got some talented kids, so. But anyways, thank you for having me back. Obviously, we had some students here to start school committee session, really awesome kids, so happy for them. Overall, the fall season is wrapping up this Thursday with the Thanksgiving Day football game. It was an incredibly successful fall season and to be honest, one of the most successful seasons we've had in recent memory. Almost every single one of our teams made the state tournament. So, teams that qualified for the state tournament were field hockey, volleyball, boys soccer, girls soccer, dance, cheerleading, swimming, boys cross country and girls cross country. And even the two teams, the, the only two teams that didn't qualify for the tournament, football and golf, they still had awesome seasons as well. Football is going into Thursday's game with a winning record of five and four. And our golf team did an amazing job throughout the season. They, for people that haven't followed our golf program, we, we lost almost our entire varsity lineup. So, I think a lot of people were kind of overlooking us this year. And they just continued to get better and better. They won the majority of their meets down the stretch towards the end of the season with some big wins over Walden Catholic and Burlington. And so, football and golf, even though they, there were only two teams that didn't make the tournament, they had great seasons as well. League champs, we had a bunch of teams win league championships. Girls soccer team won league championship for the first time in 34 years. Boys cross country went undefeated, won the league championship, I think the sixth year in a row. They also won the middle six league meet as well. Girls cross country won the league championship. Swimming, won back to back the past two years and once again, came in first place in the middle six freedom division. Cheerleading, won the middle six league championship. So, we had a lot of, a banner season so far, I guess you would say. Some other notable performances, our volleyball team had the best season they've ever had in school history. Swimming, senior captain Katie Pat broke a number of school records, placed fourth in the state. We also had Audrey Cook placed fifth in the state. Dance team just came in second at states this past weekend, so dance had an awesome season. Senior Ashley Purcell on the girls soccer team was named first team all-state. And we need to do a little more research, but we think she may have broken the all-time Wakefield High School scoring record. I can fact check that, but I'm pretty sure she did. She had an amazing season. We had a number of students already commit to major colleges and universities. We had Mike and Sammy here earlier. Boys and girls cross country, first time since 1994, we had a boy and girl champion at the league meet. And of course, our girls cross country team, they won the Division 2A state championship. And the boys cross country team won the all-state championship first time since 1972. So, really awesome fall season and hopefully we can, I don't know if we'll be able to duplicate this in the winter, it's a tall task, but we're up for it. So, we get some awesome coaches and awesome kids working hard and I'm just so happy for them and so proud of them. So, yes, Mike.
Question Brendan, with winter sports, what's going to be the rules of the road, so to speak?
Uh, so, the MIAA just came out with a mask policy. All, all winter sports, indoor sports are going to have to wear a mask following along the guidelines with DESI as well. I think it's until, what is it, January 15th? So, they'll, they'll reconsider things at that point. But, up until that point, all indoor sports are going to have to wear, wear masks. Other than that, to be honest, mostly, I, I say back to normal in quotations, as, as normal as it can be. We, the one most challenging sport right now, we're still trying to figure out is probably indoor track. A lot of the facilities we run at, for example, Boston University, require that you be vaccinated to be in the facilities. That's not a problem for, for some schools in the league, like Lexington, Arlington, and I think Belmont, all the student athletes have to be vaccinated. So, it's not a problem for those schools. However, as you know, we, we don't have a mandate. So, we're still trying to kind of figure out that piece for indoor track. But, all the other sports are basically back to normal with the exception of, of the, any quarantining, kid testing positive and, and mask wearing, so.
To know a vaccination mandate at the league level?
No, no, no.
Thank you.
Yes.
As far as the masks go for individual sports like gymnastics, is that something that, is there, can they take them off while competing?
Unfortunately, no, I know that was, I'm on the wrestling committee and I know that was brought up for, for wrestling because it's, it's obviously a very intense sport. And the, what the MIAA basically said was, you know, we can make whatever policies we want to, but if you have to wear a mask within the schools, then it, whatever DESI rules there are, they trump MIAA rules. So, that was kind of the rationale there. So, they're still going to have to wear a mask, all indoor sports.
So, there's no like safety thing that can supersede that at all?
Yeah, no, they, their rationale was whatever rules they put in place, the state and DESI would supersede whatever rules they have. So, that's why they went on that, yes.
I thought I read Brendan, just to, a point of clarification is that if a school district did happen to apply and get granted the 80% vaccination sort of rule?
Yeah.
And then they could have masks removed, that if a sport was played on that campus, that mask wouldn't be required?
Yeah, so the MIAA came out with a notification, it's actually just this afternoon, a few hours ago, that you would still have to wear a mask.
Okay.
So, it literally just came out probably four hours ago.
One other question, so those schools that have mandated vaccinations, if we play in their facility, we don't have to be vaccinated correct in order to play against them in their home gym or whatever?
Yeah, like I said, the one tricky part is the universities.
Yeah.
That's, that's the tricky part, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Brendan, is there any discussion about the athletic directors contacting DESI to have them rethink that policy?
The mask wearing policy?
Wear, particularly for individual sports where it, it feels like it's a safety issue?
Yeah, again, I, I'm on the wrestling committee and we had the lengthy discussion about that. I, I know the people down at the MIAA are in close communication with DESI. I can't speak to those conversations, I'm not a part of them, but I know they are in close communication with them, so.
I think the question about gymnastics is about, you know, in certain events.
Yes.
The vault, the beam.
Yeah.
Right? Where it's, you know, when you're, you know, it can impede your vision.
Yes.
Right? And I, and please, I'm not a gymnastics coach by any stretch, so, but I'm just, you know, when I, when we kind of talk with coaches or talk with athletes, and is that pretty close?
Yeah, it's just, it's a, it's a huge safety hazard. You know, my, my daughter almost broke both ankles having a mask go over her eyes. From, you know, because they had to wear it. In competition now, they don't have, they can take it off while they're competing and then they put it back on. But, obviously that private club is different than, than schools.
So, maybe more to follow there, we'll see.
Yeah.
Brendan, thank you so much.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Great season. Looking forward to the winter season.
Congratulations.
Yes, yes, thank you. Thank you.
Good seeing everyone.
Bye-bye. Hi Brendan.
And that's it, that's it from us on the school side. We'd just like to, just to, to close by saying, you know, thank you to the Wakefield Education Foundation, who has started to distribute their grants. And I know our teachers are, are grateful for the support and, and the work that WEF does to, to help them with their projects. And there's going to be another chickling hatching, hatching grant happening, so more to follow there. It'll be exciting to watch. And, and to everyone, you know, would like to, I just say, you know, to all of our families, our students, best wishes over the Thanksgiving break, so. Well, and that, that's it. Thank you for the time.
Alright Christine, you're up.
Great, I'm up. Tonight, we have the October financial report. The first page is the local budget, which shows remaining about 14.14% remaining after all the encumbrances for the payrolls and purchase orders to date for this year. Second page, you'll see it by location. And Kevin and I, we had a conversation today about why the one school Doyle looks like a little over budget. But, that's because that's the one school that has a revolving account attached to it, that we collect tuition payments. So, as we collect the revenue, we can, we can move some encumbrances for the paraprofessionals to the revolving account. The next page is just a summary of the revenues. And then, we have the grants. In October, we get the, we got our Title I allocations from the state, Title II, Title, Title I, Title II. So, you'll see those. As quickly as they came in, they were encumbered and wiped out. So, Title II A, that supports our mentoring program, that's about $47,000. Title I, these are entitlement grants based on the demographics of our schools. So, Title I supports the Woodville School, the Galvin School and the high school. So, those are our titles. And then, our, our sped grants for our paraprofessionals, for those demographics are also entitlement grants. And the last page is the revolving accounts. We talked about the Doyle preschool tuition account for all of our, when we collect the tuition payments. Wakefield Academy, we're, we're fortunate that our revolving accounts are pretty healthy. Our school lunch program, as you, as you'll know, we're not collecting, food is still free. We hope to know in January about what it's going to look like for next year. Participation rates are through the, the roof. But, I spoke to Danielle and Sandy today and we look like we're almost fully staffed. We had our last two vacancies, we had, for the school, the cafeteria workers, we had interviews. So, they're, they're scheduled to start the first week of December. So, it took us to December, but we're fully staffed for the cafeteria.
Great news.
Position, so we're thrilled. Does anyone have any questions? Great?
I have a question.
Oh, sure, Tom.
On the, on the IDEA grant, it looks like we got a $40,000 bump that we weren't anticipating?
We did.
Why, why was that?
Basically, based on our demographics and our numbers in the district. So, the federal government had the availability of the funding to support that.
They had increased it.
Yep. So, as you can see, we immediately encumbered it.
Right. I did notice that.
We have about 32 paraprofessionals on there. So, that helps support the local budget as well. So, that's it for the, any, any other questions, Tom?
Are you done, Tom, sorry?
No, I'll, I'll go ahead.
Okay. So, is that being 14%, is that normal for this time of year?
Yes.
Okay.
I, I mean, last year was an unusual year due to COVID. We, we put a lot of HVAC work in. So, as you can see what we spent this time last year, we're, we're, we're pretty, we're pretty close. I mean, a little bit less because we had so many contracted services last year. But, we're in good shape.
And do we have a percentage of students that are taking advantage of the school lunch program?
So, Danielle has those numbers, I can tell you they're much higher than last year for obvious reasons. That and Lisa's pizza, which everyone loves.
Good stuff, yeah.
Which is, yeah. But, I can get you those numbers, but yeah, that's why we were struggling because of participation rates. We, we needed to be fully staffed.
Right.
Right.
And we, we had three or four vacancies up until, like I said, this week we had some fantastic candidates. So, we're thrilled.
And everyone's at school for five days a week.
Exactly.
So, the hybrid piece was a, a real whack last year, yeah.
Christine, do you mind talking about the other hiring? So, it's great news to hear about food services. Have we made any progress on crossing?
We have. So, we had a cross and got a move from the Walton School to the Galvin, which produced a vacancy, obviously, at the Walton, that got filled. And we had one more vacancy to fill at the Galvin. But, right now, we have three substitutes that are filling in. So, technically, we still have one vacancy at the Galvin, but our substitutes have been fabulous and are filling that role. We, we had, Mass Hire is also working with all the communities in Massachusetts to, to help match people looking for jobs with districts like us who have vacancies. So, we put our name into that this week and we're hoping to get some candidates. The, the other vacancy that we've been struggling is we have a 7D bus driver position that Deirdre Sandonato always asks me to remind people, if anyone knows anyone with that particular license and wants to have a, a great career as a 7D bus driver, to let us know.
Yeah, that was a problem with some athletic events.
Right.
You know, getting there on time, you know, because of the limitation on that side too.
But, also Doug talked about this at our community call last week. NRT let us know that they are filling, we were down a bus driver. Normally, we have seven bus drivers, we were down. So, where the first, I think it's December 6th, we'll have that, that new bus route up and running at the Galvin School, which will alleviate some of the longer routes, the less crowding, crowding on the buses. So, they were able to hire, NRT was able to hire some additional drivers that pass their CDL licenses. But, Deirdre right now is working with the schools and the families to get those new routes out. So, that will be communicated next week after the holidays.
Okay. Any remaining questions?
I can't remember if you do the donation or that, it doesn't, later?
One last, we have a gift.
Move the school committee accept with gratitude the donation of $2,568.40 for the Walton School PTO, for the Walton School to help purchase art room tables.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Judy, roll call.
Ms. Baer?
Yes.
Mr. Markham?
Yes.
Mr. Boudreau?
Yes.
Ms. Lehman?
Yes.
Mr. Ingles?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Fiscadlo?
Yes.
Ms. Wall?
Yes.
Okay.
I do have a question on that, sorry, as far as like, so our tables are an expense budget item, I assume, not capital?
They're, they are not capital items.
Not money?
No, and is it something that, that the Walton asked for and we didn't have money in the, in the district budget? It's a very generous gift and I'm happy to accept it, but I'm just curious how it landed that a PTO is paying for school facilities.
So they made the donation to the school, I don't know how it came about particularly for art room tables, I think it was a conversation with the principal and the teachers at the school about a need, uh, from fundraising from the PTO.
Okay.
Obviously had a quote for the tables, it's a rather odd number otherwise, so.
Oh, definitely.
It might be changing the layout, um, because when we did the school over, there were new tables in that spectacular room. So I think that that's, we can, we can let you know more about that.
Any remaining questions? Um, subcommittee reports. So the Finance and Facilities Committee met on the eighteenth of November. Tim O'Brien gave a facilities update, um, and, and really kind of gave us the rundown of some things that were happening at each of the schools. One question that I wish I had asked him when he was here earlier was, I know there was an effort to try to get the, the elevator at Landrigan Field, um, kind of, it was not working, uh, exactly correctly, and, and they were hoping to get it fixed in time for the game on Thursday. Do we know if that did happen?
I believe so, I don't know, I think.
I believe it did.
Okay.
I believe it did.
I know they were trying to get somebody out to look at it and, and it.
I think it's all set.
It had to pass inspection, that was the problem.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
That was supposed to happen today, I didn't get the feedback on that.
Okay. Um, so we got an update on, on various facilities, um, got an update on the doors at the Galvin Middle School that were having some problems, that really turned out to be kind of based on like needing to be cleaned in a different way, um, talked about training for some of our, I believe it was HVAC systems, but maybe heating systems, if that's different than HVAC, which I think it is. Um, but now that they've, um, they've done some training at the town level, and now the, 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 um, local custodian in that building has kind of a better handle on, you know, how to, to manage that system, which is great. Um, talked a little bit about some univ, univentilators being replaced at the Dolberg. Um, and so it was, it was just a good kind of update on some very specific things that are going on across the schools. And then, really, the, the remainder of the meeting, we spent talking about kind of budget and the budget process, because it's that time, um, that we're gonna start talking about kind of, um, the, the timeline for budget, and, uh, we also talked about the fact that we have kind of a new, um, uh, finance committee set of liaisons that will, um, be the people that we work with, kind of, um, on, on the budget process. Um, so we talked about engaging them and inviting them to a future meeting. Um, and that really was kind of the, the vast majority, we talked a little bit about, um, so, again, in the context of, of budget, kind of what we can expect, um, for the budget to, to, um, not what we can expect, but thinking about what, what the budget increases might look like. Um, and then talked a little bit about MSBA, really what Tim kind of gave the update on tonight about the visioning, visioning sessions. Um, we are scheduled to meet next Thursday on December second, and that's it for me. Um, Tom, labor and personnel?
Sure, thank you. Uh, we had a meeting, uh, since the, since the last school committee meeting, and pleased to report that the MOU with the WEA, um, uh, has been signed and executed. Um, so there's, uh, there's lots of good news, uh, you know, um, uh, for that piece, we want to certainly thank the, uh, the WBA leadership, um, and the administration for, um, what had been, although was a, a little, took a little longer than I think we can get hoped, we had a couple back and forth, but that's, uh, that's a part of the process, uh, legitimate and, and appropriate dialogue is, is, uh, is, is healthy, and I think we had a good exchange of concerns and ideas, uh, but certainly very much want to thank, uh, the union leadership for the, um, for the work and the representation that went in to produce, uh, the document. Um, and that was, so we sort of, sort of debriefed on that, but that has now been signed and, and executed. And we will meet next Tuesday, a week from yesterday, week from today, excuse me, week from today.
Mike, uh, Student Services?
Yep, so we, uh, we met the day after Labor Relations Met, that Wednesday, whatever that date was, I, I think it was an abbreviated meeting, uh, but given everything that was going on and some of the topics earlier in this, uh, evening, you know, talked a little bit about some things, Doug obviously couldn't share a lot, but we spent a little bit of time on that, and then we did talk about the fact that we need to get back on track with the budget, so we need to start planning for that, 'cause that's right around the corner as well. That was it.
Thanks. Kevin?
Great, um, we have not met as a committee since our last meeting, but our next meeting is scheduled for a week from today as well, at four o'clock.
Okay. You know, Kevin, I'm, I'm gonna, I'll put it out there, we got a request tonight to take a look at our policies. Um, I think we should plan to get that onto the, um, to the agenda for the, the subcommittee to take a look at.
Sure.
Okay. Um, future dates, we've got a meeting scheduled not until December fourteenth, um, so that's gonna feel like really far away, but we do have one meeting left in December, and that will be on December fourteenth. Uh, school committee comments, Amy Lehman, I'm gonna start with you.
Hi, yeah, thank you, sorry I couldn't be there in person. Um, I just wanna thank the parents that came out and made joint statements tonight, I learned a lot, um, listening, and, and while there are some things the school committee can't do, there are things that we can do, and so I look forward that it seemed like they started the conversation, and I think I'd like to continue that conversation and bring these students and their families some closure. There's, um, things that we go through in life, especially in our high school years, and, and this will always be a memory for them, so I'd like to work with them to see if we can help other students going forward and make a, a safe place at the high school. So thank you.
Amy Wall?
Um, actually, just wanted to acknowledge, um, the parents and girls that were here tonight, um, their bravery and strength for speaking out and coming out in public like that, I'm sure it wasn't easy. Um, I stand with you, um, and I agree with Amy that I'm glad that conversation started, and I, I'm hopeful that we can come up with something to, I guess, just to make sure that this type of stuff doesn't happen ever again, so, and I hope everybody has a good Thanksgiving.
Mike?
Yeah, certainly, uh, from what I've heard, the young girls that have been involved have shown tremendous strength, so I think they're gonna be okay, they, they, uh, they need help from us and we'll provide it, but they're gonna be okay, but, uh, on a somewhat more positive note, and I always forget the name of the event, but the, uh, the event we had, the musical thing.
Oh, my goodness, uh, Together, All Together?
All Together.
All Together, so, uh, I, I, it continues to amaze me, the talent of the kids in this, you know, acting, singing, dancing, it's extraordinary, I go, you feel like you're on Broadway watching these shows, it's amazing what they can do, and Will, Kevin Harris, did a wonderful job with coordinating that as well. Boy, I mean, I, I hope I never miss one again, it was really amazing watching it, so I know many of us went, but it's, I saw Kevin there, uh, it was really incredible.
Steven?
Um, I would just, again, you know, also thank the parents and the students that came tonight, um, that, that could not have been easy, so I, I appreciate them, um, sort of bringing this forward. Um, I think that there are some things that we can take a look at, um, inside of, you know, our policies and, and make sure that we're sort of aligned, um, with today's environment. Um, on a more positive note, um, just, I feel like two, three weeks in a row, we had incidents where, um, student, um, you know, peers took, uh, took on a strong role in cleaning up our community, um, and it came, um, sort of through their direction. So I would just highlight, um, that, that as a community, um, these are the goals that, that we're projecting, and our kids are picking up on it, um, and they want to make their world a better place. And so I, I applaud them, I applaud their, their teachers, I applaud their community members, um, it just, it, it, it warms my heart to, to see it happen and, and to, to take part in it, it's been fantastic.
Thanks, Steven. Tom?
Thank you. Um, certainly, I, certainly, I, I support and agree with everything that my colleagues have said previously, starting off with, with Amy Lehman's comments, couldn't, couldn't agree more in appreciating, uh, the challenges and the difficulties with, uh, with which, and, and the courage, of course, that the parents and students, uh, brought to us tonight, um, and we certainly have, um, we have a lot to work, work to do, as we've seen in a number of, uh, things that have come, uh, uh, before us, risk, study, risk management, uh, student surveys and such, um, we have, um, we have a lot to do in our, in our community. That notwithstanding, um, I have every, every faith and confidence that we will get there, that this is a town that pulls together, this is a community that, um, that has had difficult days, has had pretty dark days in the past, and, uh, Wakefield has come together nicely. We are a community that works together, that, that cares for each other, that loves each other, um, and in the end, um, really, hopefully, you know, some more positive things will come, uh, from some of the darkest of days, um, and I look forward to that. Um, I certainly want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving, and hope, I look forward to seeing everyone at the game Thursday, and go Warriors.
Kevin?
Uh, thank you, uh, three things, I want to echo my, my colleagues' comments and to thank and express appreciation for those that came here, uh, to speak and to acknowledge that they were heard, and, um, look forward to, to continuing to move forward in the ways that we can, at least as a school committee. Uh, number two, um, Tim talked a little bit about the educational visioning process, it's been fascinating, it's a really, really interesting process, it's incredibly exciting, and it's very well done, and so I know there's others, Stevens on it, um, as well, and it, it leads you through this process of thinking critically from kind of a, a philosophical stage down to what is it, um, that you're looking for in terms of design concepts, and the mix of people on, and you put into these different groups, each of the sessions, is really fascinating the way that different people bring different perspectives, a lot of value to that. Tim, for instance, was in my group last week and was thinking about heating, and I never would have thought about heating, and, you know, the things like that, so it was very interesting the way that our perspectives brought about different things, but some of the faculty that are on it, the administrators, the town, it's, it's a great process, and I can't wait for more people to become involved in it as the process continues to move forward, it's really, really exciting. And then lastly, um, just at this time of thanks, I just want to take a moment to thank everybody, really, that are involved in the Wakefield Public Schools for the incredible work that's been done this year despite some still really challenging circumstances, so those that are in our schools, our faculty and our staff have done an amazing job, um, our administrators have worked really, really hard, and then I'd be remiss if I didn't acknowledge all of you as well, this is probably the hardest working committee I've ever been a part of, I've never met so often, uh, over the years that I was on it in one point oh, but, uh, two point oh is, is requiring a lot of time, and the engagement by all of you has been amazing, so I'm, I'm incredibly thankful for, for, um, working and learning with you, et cetera, as we, uh, continue to support the school, so happy Thanksgiving to everybody, and, um, hope you get a chance to relax, enjoy, um, time with family and friends and those you choose to be with, so, thank you.
So I would reiterate most of, of what has been said here, Kevin, I'm glad you, you took the time to kind of, um, be grateful and, and show some gratitude to kind of the staff and everybody involved at the Wakefield Public Schools, it has been, it continues to be tough, um, you know, things are, are still difficult, uh, for our teachers, for our students, um, so I think that was a great call out. Um, I also wanted, uh, wanted to mention, uh, the, the theater presentation, um, what caught me was the talent that has come through this system, and, um, and all of the cool things that those, those, I don't, I can't call them kids, 'cause they're not kids, right, these young adults are doing with their talent, um, was, was really, um, extraordinary. Um, and that's not a word I use very often, but I, I was just really impressed, really, really impressed. Um, and I, I, there was a student, oh my goodness, I forget his first name, Baumgartner, I believe was his last name, and my, I, I wasn't sure if he was one of those kids who had already graduated, or, and, and my son was like, no, 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 he's a student right now, he had just the most beautiful voice, um, and so I, I, I really, I was just super impressed, it was really, really well done, and I'm, I'm really glad that we went. Um, so I'll, I'll close with, you know, I, I agree with all of you about the, um, the bravery and the courage that it took for both parents and, and students to show up today. I, um, I really tried to look each of those students in the eye as, um, as things were being read, because, um, it, it's them that I'm, I'm most concerned about, um, I am a mom to a, to a daughter, um, and mental health for girls is a huge concern for me. Um, and so, um, we do have more work to do, and we, we need to keep kind of all working together, um, where we can, and on the things that we can, um, affect, um, and, and we will do that. Um, and so with that, I think we can call this meeting to, uh, or adjourn this meeting, we need a motion.
I, I move that the school committee adjourn its meeting of Tuesday, November twenty-three, twenty twenty-one.
Second.
Uh, motion made and seconded, Judy, we need a roll call.
Ms. Bear?
Yes.
Mr. Markham?
Yes.
Mr. Boudreau?
Yes.
Ms. Lehman?
Yes.
Mr. Ingles?
Yes.
Mr. Fiscadlo?
Yes.
And Ms. Wall?
Yes.
All right, thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you all.